Looking at right now is where the kitchen was. We've done some demolition work, removing floors and old cabinetry. This is an example of a one-bedroom that's within the carriage house. Here we show the upstairs bedroom. Again, demolition. The tub and toilet had been removed from the kitchen, or excuse me, the bathroom.
I don't know if you, there may be one, maybe we would show one more unit of the four, but I would like all the videos entered into the record.
You're welcome to show whatever videos you want to show.
Okay. Yeah, up there.
This is the kitchen with the cabinetry having been removed. Pantry for the kitchen.
Yeah, I think we're repeating there. As long as we can get the rest of them in the record, I think unless anybody wants to see more, we'll stop at this point.
The petitioners, do you want to see any more of the videos?
No.
They're all entered into the record then.
I'd like to at least have him just to verify the cost numbers that we have in here. We have the contractor for the building, Mr. Wall.
I mean, sir, if you would please state your name and address of the record.
John Wall, Glassford, Illinois, 101 Barnes Street.
John, what business are you in?
I've been in the construction business for about thirty-six years.
Are you familiar with the property?
Yes, I am.
Did you prepare certain estimates for renovation costs?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And you've seen the estimates that have been presented to the commission?
Yes.
Okay. And did you also give us the, in preparing this, give Shane the estimated cost of conversion of the carriage house to a garage?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And you have these renovation costs for the house and for the car to keep them as apartments are based on numbers that you've supplied to Shane?
Correct. Yes, they are.
And you think those numbers are accurate and you're willing to see them?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Wait for questions while he's up there?
Let them finish their presentation, then we'll ask questions of all three, potentially all three witnesses.
Okay. So basically, let me ask Shane, if you were not able to renovate the carriage house, would you have difficulty getting the money to convert the carriage house to a garage?
Yes.
And would the garage have any value as far as you were concerned?
Minimal.
Okay. And the renovation to a garage would require both the first and second, the second floor to be totally taken out and all the walls and plumbing and everything to be taken out on both levels to turn it into a garage? Zekra?
That's correct.
Let me just sort of close here. It's a historic neighborhood. So renovating in an historic neighborhood is not as easy as if you're outside the historic neighborhood because you have, there are rules that have to be followed and maintained. So costs are important. It's important for the owner. It's also important for the neighborhood in terms of the quality of what's going on there. The carriage house is going to be there whether it's empty or not because we'd have to get permission from the Historic Preservation Commission and the City Council to tear it down if that's the alternate use. It doesn't make much sense. It doesn't make sense for the people who live there. This is a good opportunity to get that house into good shape and to, it doesn't bother us that we have tenants living on our street because most of the landlords that live in our neighborhood do a good job of screening their tenants and the quality of the tenants. We have a couple that we don't like, but for the most part, it's there. And with the kind of renovation that Shane is proposing, we know that that's what he's going to get as far as somebody who lives there. We already have, by the way, a tentative commitment or at least a level of interest by a medical student who's just starting at the University of Illinois Medical School who wants to live in the carriage house in one of the units. So that's the quality of the tenant that we like to see coming in. We think that the, that there is a definite hardship here. The numbers support that. We don't think that the, this is because of, Shane didn't create this problem. It was created by people before him, but the plight is the result of the fact that what do you do, what do you use the carriage house for since it's already built out? It's not like we're asking to convert a garage to four units. They're already there. So I mean, that goes to the physical aspect of it and the uniqueness of the property. The variation certainly won't alter the character of the neighborhood if it's done correctly. It's there. The house is already there. It's one of my favorites because it has, if you look at pictures of the house, it has the curved window on the first floor of the house, which is to me really unique. So it's not going to change any of that because nothing on the exterior is going to change except it's going to be improved. We don't think, first of all, and then let me just point out because there was some issue. Clearly, he has to comply with whatever codes exist in terms of using when he renovates the units. So for fire purposes, he's not increasing the hazards anymore. He's doing whatever the law requires him to do in order to satisfy the City of Peoria codes. There's certainly, this is not a place that are going to have a lot of large families. They're efficiency studio apartments, so we don't expect to see a bunch of kids running around in here. And so we don't think it's going to, you know, cause a detriment to the neighborhood. The other thing is the, as far as garbage uses, he can use the same size totes or whatever that he's using now with these additional four units that won't require anything bigger in order to handle. So I would ask you, I think it's the right thing to do. I think it's the fair thing to do. And from our neighbor, you know, from Shane's perspective, it makes economic sense for him to do it this way. And from the neighborhood sense, it's, to us, we look at as a stabilizing project in our neighborhood, and we're happy to see those kinds of projects. Thank you.
Thank you. There's questions for the petitioners. Start with Commissioner Lucine.
What I want to know is whether or not there's adequate off-street parking to accommodate these four extra units.
Can you repeat that, please?
Yeah, I want to know if there's adequate off-street parking to accommodate the four additional units.
Well, as of right now, we've got, with the addition of the carriage house, we still have the brick patio towards the back. We've got an additional parking spot neighboring the carriage house. And then we've got the off-street parking where there are hardly ever any cars there. So it is my opinion that we do have adequate.
How many cars can that accommodate? If you know.
On the backside, we've got.
Well, on your property, I mean, if you, you know, if we allow the variance, there's going to be four more, at least four more people living there. They've got to park their cars somewhere. So where would they park?
Sure.
Well, can you pull up the top, the topo, or you have a map overhead on your thing? While they're doing that, let me just address, since we're next to Methodist Hospital, and it was always when we first moved in, you couldn't park anywhere because of employees parked there. That's all been taken care of by Methodist. The street has alternate parking on both sides, and there's a system with the city that you get, if you live on the street, you get a permit so you can keep your car, but only on one side of the street for, you know, a longer period of time. So there are tenants that not necessarily there, but in the house next door who do park on the street, and that's fine. It's because the parking's on one side and there's more than adequate street parking along there to handle any capacity that would, where the need would be.
Is this what you were suggesting?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out where the open space in between the, where your cursor is that can fit roughly three to four cars. And then on the bottom side of the carriage house, there's room for another vehicle there.
So you have nine tenants now, is that right? You have any tenants there now?
We've got one tenant currently.
Well, I know, you really didn't answer my question. What I want to know is if you have adequate parking for thirteen units?
No. No.
You don't?
It'd be on this.
They would, not all units would be parking on the property.
Okay.
As they, which is true for the property next door.
Well, I mean, Mr. Zurla's objection is that there's a problem with density. So, I mean, is there, I'm trying to determine whether there's a problem or not. I mean, between the on-street parking and the off-street parking, are you going to be able to accommodate thirteen, assume thirteen vehicles? I mean, there may not be.
Because yes, because from 1981 on, and once we got the agreement with Methodist to keep their employees from parking over there, the answer was they were accommodated.
Okay, so now.
And it didn't create a problem. Nobody was parking on the lawn or somewhere else or had a walk box to park their car.
Well, that's what I want to know. I mean, that seems to be, for your objection, is additional density problem, so. Okay, thank you.
Anything else now? Commissioner Lyons?
I got a question about, it perplexes me why it would cost $110,000 more to convert to a garage, which is not heated, air-conditioned, plumbed, kitchen cabinets, new fixtures.
Mr. Wavie?
I guess there might be a question about historical preservation, but why would it cost so much more?
Whoops. Answer your question. When they converted them over to apartments, they have, took out all the main bearing to make that a carriage house, and they put supporting walls down through them, which would all have to be taken out. And all the bearing, all the structure would have to be redone on the inside to carry all the bearing weight of the structure, especially with the second story there. Now they have bearing, they have walls making them small units in there that carries all the bearing load for the upstairs and the whole structure. And that all has to be changed. All them walls would have to come out to do, to carry that load. And when you get into like the cabinets and stuff, most of the units only have, I mean, it's very minimal. They have four foot of cabinets. There, you know, there's, there's not a lot of money tied up in each one of these units. Probably the biggest expense in the whole thing would be the HVAC part of it. But there, I mean, there, you know, there's not a lot of money to anywhere else in the units.
So you, it would cost $160,000 basically to put in load-bearing walls?
You'd have to take out everything from below, support the structure, and then put bearing in there.
And you'd have to do that versus demolishing it?
Versus what?
Demolishing it.
Demolishing it? Well, that would be, I guess that would be your other option if you wanted to tear the whole place down.
And you wouldn't say, you know, you already said that there wouldn't be additional value to garage anyway. I don't know why you wouldn't try to.
That's his, additional value would be if you, I guess, if it became a garage. It's all be, it's a big garage with a.
Oh, I think you'd want to minimize the expensive converting it to a garage, but anyway. Okay.
Expensive to do.
I just mentioned, it's not, it's not a normal process just to come in and get a demolition permit because of the fact that there's a historic, you know, preservation designation for the neighborhood. And I don't know if the neighbors would, you know, the neighborhood would be happy to see. It's an integral part of the history of the neighborhood, the fact that this carriage house exists over there. And so we aren't happy when, normally when demolition occurs unless it's totally unavoidable. And to just say, well, because we can't get four units in here, we should then go ahead and demolish, that's, to us is not, we'd rather have the four units.
Any other questions, Commissioner Lyons?
Thanks.
Wagner?
Just a couple of questions. When did you learn that nine units are only allowed there?
The morning of closing is when we received the certificate for nine units.
And when did the demolition and construction and all that start? Well, there's two by fours, and you said that you'd done some demolition in there. So did you have access to the property the day of closing?
No, this was roughly a month after, after closing and being removed. Moldy carpet, moldy cabinetry.
But you knew that it was not allowed?
Um.
Not on the day of closing, correct?
He knew that he would have to come in based on the decision the city made. He would have to come in and appear before you, this commission to request the variance to add the four units. However, what they were doing was they were cleaning out the units. There was no new construction that took place in the.
Sorry, you'll need to step to the podium if you're going to testify.
And I hadn't asked him a question anyway. I'm asking Shane.
So the answer is although there was wood there, they're not constructing anything. They were just cleaning up and they were storing the material there.
There's a lot of work being done on the main house right now, so we bet it's being used as storage.
I'm just trying to get a timeline.
Sure.
Okay. I'm not giving you a hard time for cleaning up. I would too. I mean, it is part of the property, but you're talking about money. That means you're putting dollars into demolition and things like that.
Sure.
Maybe putting the cart before the horse. Question for the contractor.
Mr. Wavie, please step up.
Have you seen the electrical in there?
Yes.
Have you seen the interiors of the walls?
Some of them, there's mostly interior walls, not the exterior.
But the electric, the electrical in that part of it back there isn't that old. A lot of the electrical stuff's been brought up, I would say, within the last fifteen years.
And what type of, what type of wiring is in there?
It's all Willex.
Metal case Willex?
No, it's a vinyl case. Most of it's exposed with wire mold.
I'm just trying to get a timeline on maybe when some of that construction might have been done and when it actually happened.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from the commission? I do have a question, now directed in general to the petitioner, and whoever is appropriate to answer can answer it. Was an estimate done on the cost to demolish it? Again, putting aside the historical aspect of it, is there, do we know the cost to actually demolish the building?
No, we, as far as, we don't have an actual cost because we weren't looking to do that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the commission? Thank you very much. We will now open the meeting to the public. Anybody else wishing to speak on this matter? Here's that there is nobody else wishing to speak on this. We'll now allow the commission to ask some additional questions of staff.
And.
I would like to start with the questioning. The first question I have would be getting to the question that Mr. Templis was attempting to ask earlier, which is what does the city foresee as the use of the carriage house if this variance is not granted?
I can just say it's not our role to tell them what to use it for beyond what's allowed in the ordinance, and then they can process. But carriage house is just that, a carriage house, so it could be, you know, it's already been changed away from parking, but that is one option. We did not say anything about demolition. Also, even with the owner, we had discussed, it could be a rec room, it could be anything. But it's not our role to tell them what to do with that. I would add, I do have a few, when it's appropriate, a few other items to address that had come up. Plus, previously I was asked a question referring to my comment about fire. And I do have our fire plans examiner here that he'd need to be sworn in, but he can address what was behind that comment. I'd said before, we weren't able to fully, because we weren't able to go inside, but he can, he has some information as well.
I will allow you to go ahead and present your additional testimony now, because it may help frame some of our additional questions. However, I would say before we bring any other witnesses in, is the city taking a position that this, that the use of the carriage house would be a fire hazard? Is that part of the argument as to why it's injurious to the public?
No, 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 no. This is back on, and again, I can only speak to the, it's appropriate for me to speak to the criteria and what I have in the memo. And this is just an iteration of what we'd meant. What, you know, one of the items listed is, you know, the issue of reasonable return and that, you know, the argument being made by the petitioner is to make a reasonable return, they need the income from the additional four units. We had discussed as a courtesy, possibly a walkthrough, some kind of inspection to see if, I call them showstoppers, you know, if there's anything. We also discussed that ultimately it would be his design professional that would have to, you know, give some input on, you know, it's a lot of if-then statements with the code. However, we do, as part of our review through this, send it through an internal review. We were unable, as I'd stated earlier, to coordinate an inspection, which is why he's kind enough to do the videos, which were given to our building inspector and our fire plans examiner. And that's, that's why I wasn't playing on my phone earlier. That's who I was talking to, to see if he could come by and he'd, like it to come from him, not from me, but can speak to some of the things that may be required that may contribute to that. I guess I can leave it at that. And then I had a few other comments to address for items that had come up. If I may clearly finish that, or I can just say.
Let me just say this, again, we're trying to keep this on point.
Which is why.
The petitioners already conceded that they will have to comply with all applicable building codes and fire codes in the use of this property. I'm not sure why the commission needs to hear any testimony about.
That's fine. And then I'll just say, there, as far as one way or the other, what I would have stated if we were able to coordinate this a few minutes before was that we believe sprinklers could be required. And I didn't want to say that without having fire say that. That's all I was trying to have him say.
And that's a, I'm sorry.
Please, I'd like to speak out of order. Go ahead.
Okay. If that's an issue, if it's a requirement, it's a requirement. I'm not going to stand here and say yes, no, because we don't know. We're just hearing it for the first time. But whatever it is, we have to comply with it. That's a separate, distinct thing as to whether or not, you know, you got, the decision that's made here, which would allow the four units, then he has to go through the whole building code and housing code and, you know, the compliance for everything else. We know that.
Well, that was the point I was making. So I'm not, unless the city is going to take a position now that the granting of this variance will be injurious to the public because it will create a fire hazard by the extra density or something that ties into the criteria we're looking at, I don't think this, I don't think a testimony about what's required in terms of sprinklers is relevant to these proceedings. So Miss Smith, are you going to take a position?
As it is now, we are taking that position, and that's with the backing of the fire department. So that's just, it speaks to the criterion about reasonable return, just to let you know that.
So you're taking a position that the addition of four units would be, you're going, is going to be injurious to the public or is going to be reasonable return?
Well, both. The, so that could, it's there, they'll need to run their own pro forma on that. But if fire sprinklers are in fact required, that will also increase their cost. They're saying that to take those units out is costly, or saying it could also be costly to put those units back in. That's one. And then as they stand now, without fire protection that's up to current code, then that is a hazard.
All right. Let me ask Mr. Templis a question. It seems to me that this is now. It, it seems to me that this is now some new information that was not previously brought to your attention. Are you prepared to proceed on this, or do we need to continue this hearing to next month?
Um, it puts us in a, it's a dichotomy here, but the, the, if that's the correct word, the, uh, we've nev- we've not heard anything on this at all. I don't know how to respond to it. If, if they're saying, we have to now go through this all of the analysis and redo our projections, uh, I don't know what to do. I, I don't think it's relevant, because I think, as we said, we have to comply with whatever it is, and if it adjusts our numbers to do so, yes. It's no more than, okay, uh, maybe our return is not going to be as good, but it might, it still might be okay. Um, the, but just to hear now, without anything in writing, talking to the fire department, or any of the information, looking at the codes, uh, I think it's, it, I think it's inappropriate. The city had the opportunity to present it, and present it to us, and they didn't. And I think it would be inappropriate for them, for, you know, for them now to try to present it after the fact. I mean, then I can go out and look at information now, and I'll go find some additional information and ask permission to enter it into the record, it's just not right.
And that's why I think, in the interest, again, I don't, I'm hesitant to suggest that we continue this, when we've already had a bunch of testimony today. I, I would like to take a five-minute recess, and allow you, Mr. Teplis, to talk to city staff, and see if you can come to an understanding about how this is going to proceed, and then we'll come back to open hearing, and we'll talk about whether we're presenting additional evidence or not.
Thank you.
So take a five-minute recess.